Ladies and gentlemen, please the upstanding Mayor of the city of Clarence, councillor Brendan Longley.
Well, hello and welcome all. Before proceeding, I pay my respects to the Murrumbina people as the traditional and original custodians of the lands on which we meet, and I acknowledge their continuing connection of the Tasmanian Aboriginal people to the skies, land and waterways. I pay respect to elders past and present. Before we commence with tonight's council meeting, please let us all pause for a quiet moment of reflection and respect. Thank you councillors, ladies and gentlemen, please be seated. Well, hello and welcome all to the, um, tonight's Clarence City Council Meeting, Monday, the 7th of July two thousand twenty five. This meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube, and what is said in this meeting is not protected by privilege, and there is a link to the agenda papers on council's website. Item number two, apologies, councillor Hunter has a leave of absence, otherwise we have a full house. Item three, declarations of interest of councils or close associate. Are there any declarations? Councillor Hume? Thank you. Any other, right, moving on, we now head into our omnibus items. Item four, confirmation of the minutes. The minutes of the council meeting held on the sixteenth of June two thousand twenty five have been circulated. Are there any issues arising? There being none, we now move into four point two, mayor's communication. The first item I'd like to talk about today is the inaugural city of Clarence Budget Breakfast that was held on Tuesday, the seventeenth of June, and I'm delighted to say it was an outstanding success. It was the ideal opportunity to meaningfully engage with our community, particularly those who invest and employ in our city and other key stakeholders on our budget and our annual plan that was endorsed by this council the previous evening. I'd like to acknowledge the efforts of our chief executive officer, Mr Nelson, and our chief financial officer, Miss Murrell, and their respective teams for their professionalism in managing the process that delivered a balanced budget. I'd also like to thank Miss Wicks and her team, particularly Mr Warridge, Mrs Hannan and Miss Ma for delivering such an impressive event that clearly demonstrated that the city of Clarence has come of age. I'd also like to thank the deputy mayor and councillor Hume for their attendance, and I look forward to this event being a mainstay on our annual calendar. Our next item, colleagues, Mr John Stevens recently advised me of his decision to step aside as a committee member of the City Development Committee and the Honours and Awards Working Group. John is well known to many of us and over the years has played a pivotal role in shaping the city's infrastructure and strategic direction. From leading council's technical services consultancy to serving as acting director of planning and development, John consistently demonstrated strong leadership and deep expertise. In nineteen ninety eight, he has appointed group manager asset management, and from nineteen ninety nine onward took on the responsibilities of acting general manager at various times, highlighting the trust and respect earned across the organisation. John's contributions have left a lasting legacy, including major projects such as the Belreve Oval redevelopment, the Belreve Boardwalk, the Lordedale Sewage System, the Pool Project, the Coal River Valley Water Scheme and the Cambridge Wastewater Treatment Plant. He also played an instrumental role in strategic initiatives such as a local government board review in two thousand and four and the two thousand and nine climate change study. While John ceased employment with council in September two thousand seventeen, he has continued to make valuable contributions through a number of avenues, including his ongoing involvement with the City Development Committee, the Honours and Awards Committee and the Access and Inclusion Working Group, but I'm pleased to say he'll still continue on that committee. Throughout his time on council, John has been a dedicated leader with a deep commitment to improving community outcomes and building a resilient future for Clarence. So, on behalf of a grateful city, we thank John for his enormously valuable service and wish him well in his future endeavours. Colleagues, I am delighted to share that the Alma Street Childcare Centre received the award for Educational Architecture at the Australian Institute of Architects State Awards on Saturday night. Open in June last year, the Alma Street Childcare Service has been transformed from a small cottage to a purpose-built custom-designed facility, with this upgrade making it possible to double their daily capacity, expanding from twenty to forty-five children a day. The Tasmanian Architecture Awards form a vital part of the Australian Institute of Architects prestigious annual awards programme, celebrating excellence in architectural design across a range of sectors. This year's award recipients showcased Tasmania's unique landscape and a growing commitment to social equity, environmental sustainability and cultural identity. The education category was highly competitive with two projects serving awards, the Shed in Launceston, a ninety-seven million dollar university Tasmania facility dedicated to health, medicine and science education research and the Alma Street Childcare Centre. All state award winners will now progress to the two thousand twenty five National Architectural Awards, which will be held in November. So, I would particularly like to thank and congratulate the designers, one plus two architecture, on such a quality result, and wish them every success at the national awards. Congratulations and well done to all involved. I now move on to my diary, and that's been circulated from the seventeenth of June through to today, the seventh of July. I'd also like to thank the deputy mayor for representing me at the exhibition opening on, um, Sunday week ago. Council workshops as listed in the agenda, four point four, tabling of petitions. CEO, are there any petitions?
Thank you, Mayor. No, there are no petitions tonight.
Thank you, CEO. Four point five, reports from outside bodies, copying refused disposal site joint authority. Councillor Walker.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Since the last meeting of council, I can confirm that, uh, the chair searched for a new head of SWS, which I conducted along with several others, was indeed successful and that the applicant that has been appointed was one Kim Evans. He started last week. We're delighted to have him on board, and we also thank Kristi Muhar for the service she provided over the years in the lead up to this change and the improvement she made as well. So, exciting times.
Thank you, Councillor Walker. Tasway South, Councillor Warren. Moving on to Tas Water Corporation, as you'll note from my diary entries, I represented the city at the Tas Water Planning Meeting in Launceston on the twenty-third of June. At this meeting, Tas Water's leadership team presented the corporate plan for two thousand twenty-six to thirty that was endorsed by shareholders, and I now table a copy of that endorsed corporate plan. Thank you, CEO. Moving on to the Greater Hobart Committee, being in caretaker mode, there hasn't been a meeting in recent, uh, recent weeks. I can report that last week's Greater Hobart Mayor's Forum, there was discussion how we may work with whoever's on the Treasury benches post-nineteenth of July to ensure we maintain momentum with the Greater Hobart Plan, and I'll have more to say on that post-nineteenth of July. Moving now on to reports from council and special committees and other representative bodies, the Cultural Creative Advisory Committee minutes dated the nineteenth of May two thousand twelve, sorry, two thousand and five, twenty-five, as included in the agenda. Are there any other reports for tabling? Deputy Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Pleasure of tabling the minutes from the Active Living Advisory Committee on the meeting of eighteenth November twenty twenty four and the minutes of the meeting on the sixteenth of December twenty twenty four.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor James?
Question. Through you, Mr Mayor, to the deputy mayor, is there a reference to tracks and trails in that, in the minutes of that meeting?
Deputy Mayor, are you able to take the?
Yes, thank you. Mister Mayor, thank you, Councillor James, for the question. Yes, the committee has noted the receipt of the minutes from the Tracks and Trails Committee meeting from the twentieth of May. They've been tabled and noted in the minutes of the Active Living Committee meeting.
Are there any other reports for tabling? Councillor Kennedy, thank you.
Minutes of the meeting of the Belreve Community Arts Centre, which is a standalone committee of council for the eleventh of June.
Wonderful, thank you. Any other reports? There being none, we move now on to our weekly briefing reports. Our weekly briefing reports, the sixteenth, twenty-third and the thirtieth of June two thousand and twenty-five have been circulated to councillors. Are there any matters arising? Councillor James?
Thank you. The weekly briefing report of the sixteenth of June twenty twenty five, and it refers to the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy, urban growth boundary, and in part it refers to the revised version of guideline one, and that refers to a new section prescribing when the preparation of a precinct structural plan is required. So, my question is, um, it appears that this particular amendment may be at odds with the legislative requirements of the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy, and on page twenty-one it lists what has been the process of a, uh, through this, through straws, and it, uh, item one is a strategy, greenfield targets with the urban growth boundary, then conceptual sequencing plan, and then it gets to the precinct structural plan. So, my question is, is part one, part two now sort of not in keeping with the changes that have occurred in relation to guideline number one?
Thank you, Councillor James. Mister Ma.
Thank you, Councillor James, for the question. In essence, no, because section eight A of the Land Use Planning Approvals Act refers to guidelines which may be adopted. These are changes that were made to the guidelines to essentially say if you're doing an amendment, then you don't necessarily need to have a structure plan titled a structure plan, as long as those issues are contained and dealt with in the report. And the main reason was that through Strelus, the requirement for a structure plan was in the discussion as opposed to a strategic outcome itself, and so therefore there had been discussions at the commission as to what that actually meant when you were trying to be consistent with it. So, they've released a modified set of guidelines to provide some certainty.
Thank you, Mister Ma. Yes, Councillor James?
So, in the weekly briefing report, it refers to several concerns arise from the workability of the amended guideline, which appear to be at odds with the legislative requirements. So, from what you've just said, it appears that there are some difficulties with the guideline number one with respect to straws.
Mister Ma?
Through you, Mayor.
Um, the, the concern came around some of the drafting. We've since had conversations with the commission who have explained how they see to interpret the drafting, which, as I said, is a matter of the, the strategic issues are dealt with in the application rather than necessarily being entitled a structure plan. So, they've been very clear on, on how they're going to interpret it, and that has put to bed some of those concerns.
Thank you, Mister Ma. Councillor James?
The other matter I would like to raise is in relation to the weekly briefing report of the twenty-third of June. With regard to upgrade of Pass Road at Rogueby, in the memorandum to us of the twenty-sixth of June, it refers to the closed meeting on the thirtieth of September, which council resolved to approve the purchase and acquisition of land subject to the purposes of road widening from the owners, et cetera, and also authorised the chief executive officer, in accordance with the Land Acquisition Act, to undertake all necessary actions, negotiate the finalised arrangements for the purchase. That was on a council meeting on the thirtieth of September twenty twenty four. On page three of that memorandum, it appears that council, well, council staff are now in the process of writing to owners of such and such pass road to make the necessary arrangements for the survey and valuation of their properties to enable the necessary deeds, et cetera, to proceed. Why has it taken so long, given that council's decision, as I mentioned, of the thirtieth of September twenty twenty four, to actually now start the process and writing to those property owners in order to make the necessary arrangements for surveys, et cetera, and to come to agreement recording the terms of the acquisitions?
Thank you, Councillor James. Am I calling the CEO, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the question, Councillor James. The simple answer to, to the question is that, um, following that initial approval to start that process around land acquisition, council officers have been working through revised plans, which was also part of the discussion we had with council, in order to make sure that any land acquisition that was required was genuinely required and minimised in accordance with, you know, the appropriate design principles. So, the time in between has been used to refine those, those designs and work through that. We're now at a point where we can comfortably go to those, those property owners and start those discussions.
Thank you. Any other issues arising from the weekly briefing reports? There being none, colleagues, I now note that we're at the end of our omnibus items. Can I have a mover, please? Councillor Warren, second and Councillor Chong, all those in favour? That's unanimous. Thank you, colleagues. Moving now on to item number five, which is public question time. We have a question, public question on ours from Mister McMahon. Thank you, CEO.
Thank you, Mayor. Mister McMahon has asked the following two-part question. As a preamble, he, he says, one of the boats in the playground at Kangaroo Bay is missing. I reported it missing on the fourteenth of January twenty twenty five and received feedback that council was aware and waiting for parts. I reported it missing again on the twenty-first of June twenty twenty five and received the same, received the same response with no indication on a possible timeframe for the play equipment to be returned to service. Mister McMahon asked, what date was the replacement part ordered and what is the lead time on the part? The answer to that question is that council removed one of the two boats from Kangaroo Bay Play Park on the, on November twenty twenty four, when we became aware some of the universal joint hangars used to suspend the boat were failing. At that time, replacement parts were ordered from council's previous supplier. That order was not fulfilled, and we understand the supplier has since gone out of business. Council has reordered the parts from an alternate supplier and expects to receive them by the end of July. Once the parts are received, the boat will be reinstated without further delay.
Thank you, CEO. Are there any questions this evening from the public gallery? Mister Paul? No? Right? Good to have you back, Mister Paul. All right. Uh, moving on now to item number six, which is deputations. Members of the public making a deputation reminder, they're limited to three minutes, and in the interest of fairness, I will strictly enforce that. A timer will sound at the end of that time period. CEO, do we have any deputations this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. We have three deputations tonight. Our first deputee is Mister Patrick Mickle in relation to the planning application for twenty Loewina Crescent, the LED billboard.
Thank you, Mister Mickle. Just your name and suburb, please.
Name, name?
Suburb, please.
Patrick Mickle, and I'm from Brisbane in Queensland.
I'm sorry about that, but welcome.
No, I've got the, the big jacket just in preparation. It's, it's a lot colder than winter in Queensland, so thank you all for having me. Well, I won't waste any more time. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me, councillors, deputy mayor and mayor, for allowing me the opportunity to come and speak to you tonight about the Bishop proposal for a digital advertising device fronting the Tasman Highway in Montague Bay. We're really proud to be partnering with the Clarence Sports Centre on this opportunity, and I want to thank Alderman Steve King, who's here in his capacity tonight as the president of the club, and, and thank you for the partnership that we've struck. As councillors would be aware, officers have raised objections to this proposal, and, and while we respect the work that's already been undertaken to date, Bishop does strongly object to the reasons for council's recommendations. I want to focus tonight on one particular part of the officer's objection, the perceived impact on driver safety. Bishop takes driver distraction seriously, and we currently operate about sixty digital advertising billboards around the country. Safety is critical to these, and some of them operate in very complex road environments with intersections and so on. When it comes to the safety of this site, we sought the opinion and the analysis of third-party independent experts. The first is Australia's preeminent driver distraction expert, a man named Professor Paul Roberts. Professor Roberts has dedicated his career to researching driver distraction and more recently the impact of digital billboards. He's appeared in court cases representing operators like Bishop, and he's also appeared on behalf of councils opposed to this type of development. Professor Roberts analyses proposals like this without fear or favour because his academic integrity is tied to his expert opinion. In the past, Professor Roberts has told us he would not support signs in certain locations, and in those instances, we take his advice and we do not pursue the application. In this case, he's looked at crash data. He's looked at the proximity to merge lanes, proximity to adjoining speed signs and the speed at which traffic is travelling down the roadway. Professor Roberts has made it clear that this location is a low-risk site and that a digital billboard at this location, in his words, is unlikely to have a measurable impact on traffic behaviour and safety. I mentioned earlier that Bishop operates sixty digital billboards. In fact, right now, there's over three thousand operating across Australia. Never once in the past twelve years has there been a single complaint or allegation that distraction from a screen leads to car accidents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mister Mickle. Thank you. CEO?
Thank you. Our second deputation tonight is from Alderman Stephen King in relation to the same application.
Good evening, Alderman King.
Good evening. This is a bit different being on the other side of the planning committee. I'm, yeah. Look, thanks for having me, but I'm not here as Alderman King tonight. I'm here as president of NFSRA. NFSRA is the National Southern Recreational Association. It's an association that's been going for fifty-one years, and we are facility providers to the community. We own Clarence and Moona Sports Centres. Now, when I say we, we're an entity that is the community, basically. So, our role is to provide the most cost-effective facilities we can for users being multiple sports. At Clarence, we have seventeen different users, including schools, table tennis, volleyball, footsball, pickleball, you name it, it's all there. Moona has a few other things like line dancing, et cetera, but we're a bit different over that side of the river, so the difference this would make to us as an organisation is immense. The, the revenue that we can receive from this helps us keep costs down. Now, we took this very seriously when our board looked at this. Our board's very diverse. They're very experienced, and when Bishop's presented to us, we had the opportunity to look at this information that Patrick's put forward and thought, well, are we good communities, uh, corporate, are good community members or not by doing this, by taking this sort of sign into our backyard? And that's what it's going to be in our backyard. And we will get revenue from that if you guys can support a change of motion or a motion to, to change the direction here. Now, we understand that it creates some angst. I understand particularly if you go against planning officers, the angst that they can go with that, but I've done it on several occasions. I'm not trying to encourage you to do it for that reason, but nevertheless, for the community, this is a real assistance for us to keep our costs down. We have, it costs us hundred fifty thousand for cleaning every year, about seventy thousand for insurance for the two centres, nearly two hundred thousand for staff, this before we open the door, then there's electricity, and then there's rates of all things. That kills us. Water, ninety-five thousand dollars a year we put aside for maintenance, just for general maintenance. We've received two million dollars from the state government about almost two years ago, and I hope you've noticed an upgrade to the centres. If you haven't been to Moona or Clarence Sports Centres, please come and have a look. They are, the facelift is amazing, but we have the yearly running costs, which we need to create as much income as we can, rather than just sucking the community dry in this particular, particularly difficult times of cost of living. So, for us, this is great benefit. We believe we're good corporate citizens. We wouldn't do it if we thought the risk was to the point of somebody being endangered in any way. So, we figure we're such good corporate citizens, we've even removed all the asbestos walls off the Moona Centre to put tin on there, which we've been wanting to do for years. So, there's a lot happening, as I say, seventeen different users. There's three hundred people registered to play table tennis at Clarence. There's three or four different schools use it. So, please help us. We'd appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Alderman King. CEO?
Thank you, Mayor. Our third deputation tonight is Mister Andrew Paul in regard to councillor Goin's notice of motion regarding signs on the Tangara Trail at Racecourse Flats.
Good evening, Mister Paul. Name and suburb, please.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Andrew Paul from Lordedale. Can I ask, is it just a copy of a series of photographs?
Absolutely. Thanks, Miss Ellis.
Passed around, please?
It will play because the clock hasn't started, so we're done.
Just looking. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and councillors, for the opportunity to address council this evening. I wish to make a request of council in relation to a section of the Tangara Trail runs around the outside of Racecourse Flats in Lordedale. A few weeks ago, there were new signs erected at entrances to a section of the trail adjacent to Racecourse Flats. These signs, and I'd refer you to photo one on the handout, indicated that no dogs were allowed on the section of the trail at skirts of the periphery of the Racecourse Flats protected area. For many years, this track, which runs from near the ABC Broadcast Tower around the back of Racecourse Flats, picks up access points from Bayview and Bayview Road and Bayside Drive in Lordedale and terminates at the Lordedale Oval. This has been a popular dog-walking track for locals of the area. Thus, it was with some surprise when we saw these signs recently elected, erected, rather, banning all dogs on the trail. Inquiries I made with council officers were to the effect that Racecourse Flats was declared a no-dog zone when council last reviewed the council dog policy back in twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two. I accept this advice, even though it was not communicated to the local users of the trail in any way. There was no public notification to residents, or indeed no signage was erected advising of the no dogs until recent weeks. However, even if the community was aware that at that time or had been advised at that time, it would not have been understood throughout the community that that section of the trail we're talking about was considered by council to be part of the Racecourse Flats Conservation Area. The trail is separated from the Salt Marsh area. The trail is separated from the Saltmarsh area by a single strand wire fence, photo two you have before you, and has always been understood to be part of the Tangara Trail. Council's own signage, again back at photo one, notes and the Tangara Trail brochure identify the track as part of the trail, and further notes that off-lead exercise of dogs under effective control is permitted. It has, up until now, been one of the few remaining areas to walk your dog all year round, given the banning of dogs on Lordedale Roaches and Maze Beach over the summer months. Additionally, Roaches Beach is also restricted for long periods of the winter months due to high tides. The trail is well-maintained by council, is a formed and gravelled track, and is regularly cut by council, as is clearly shown in photo three. I fully support the protection of the Racecourse Flats' Saltmarsh area and the protection of the vulnerable plant communities represented there. The trail is not, however, part of Racecourse Flats. Council by their own construction of the single-strand wire fence has identified this. The track is part of the Tangara Trail, is an important and valued dog-walking track in Lordedale, and I would urge council to have the signs removed and dog-walking returned to this section of the Tangara Trail. I would contend that it is not necessary to amend council's dog policy as the track in question is part of the Tangara Trail and not part of Racecourse Flats. Thank you, council, for giving me the opportunity to speak at the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Paul. And that's the end of the deputations, CEO. Thank you. Well, thank you very much for that, our three deputies. I now advise we move on to item number seven, which are planning authority matters. And I advise that council now intends to act as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act of 1993. Moving on to item 7.1, which is a planning application for 207 Tranmere Road, Tranmere, a two-lot subdivision. Call for a mover of the recommendation, which is for approval, please. Thank you, councillor Hume. Is there a second? Councillor Kennedy, thank you. Councillor Hume?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is actually a fairly straightforward application. There's three matters of use standards addressed by the officer's report, and you know, the appropriate expert advice. The lot design's a fairly sensible one, and I seek council's support.
Thank you, councillor Hume. Councillor Kennedy? Thank you. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution on this one? There being none, there's no need for I to reply then. I'll put the motion. That is for approval. The two-lot subdivision at 207 Tranmere Road, Tranmere, be approved, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? That's unanimous. Thank you, colleagues. Moving now on to item 7.2, and I understand councillor Mulder, that you have an alternate motion? Thank you. Is there a second or two, councillor? Thank you, councillor Kennedy. Councillor Mulder? Before I rejoice, thank you.
That's a serious business. The issue with this particular sign, and why we have a motion, why we have a recommendation to not approve it, is because, in the opinion of some, the issue is a safety issue. And according to some, it is a black spot. And the Australian road rules recommend against building these sorts of facilities in black spots. So the question comes down, is this a black spot or is this not a black spot? So black spots for safety areas are defined by the Australian Government as areas of road where serious crashes occur or, and in other places, where casualty crashes have happened. Now, the Black Spot Programme is defined as a safety black spot issue as three casualty crashes in a year, four in four years, five in five years. In other words, they have a history of serious crashes. The side of, this side of the road has had seven rear-end low-speed collisions with only one that doesn't, with only one that resulted in first aid. But first aid doesn't qualify as a casualty event because they only term as defined as a crash which results in death, hospitalisation or medical treatment, not paramedical treatment like the first aid. In other words, there have been, in recent history, no serious or casualty crashes in this particular point. And that's the point that Professor Roberts, as we heard tonight, an expert on this visual distraction, who deems this area to be low-risk. And as such, the sign is more than appropriate for it. And an interesting thing, at page 49, the proponents are asked to demonstrate there will not be an increase in vehicle crashes if the sign goes ahead. It is impossible to make such a statement or for evidence about something that hasn't happened yet to be produced. And normally, this would be an impossible task and it's something, except in this particular area, there are regular, much greater distractors in the form of politicians wobbling their boards on the side of the road during peak hour traffic. And yet, even from that, and I'm sure we would be told pretty quickly if there had been any increase in crashes from a much bigger physical distraction than what this sign would propose. So you are able to demonstrate there won't be an increase because this is a lower distractor. Rear-end collisions are usually at low speed, and the variable speed signs are not relevant. In fact, if you were to take notice of the relevant speed signs, you know, you're living in dreamland if you think you're going to be travelling at 40 or 50 kilometres when the traffic's crawling, which is when the rear end happens. And then we have, just up the road a bit, huge overhead billboards telling us of travel time as if you didn't know or had an alternative. They are ridiculous things. And one is placed, would you believe, right at the end of not where two lanes merge, but where two lanes merge into four lanes as the traffic from South Arm Highway seeks to merge. And there, right at that point, you have this huge big billboard. And then we have the example of Eastlands down here, a much greater billboard with a much, might I say, confused traffic arrangements, where you can come at it from four ways, and you can turn left, right, or go straight ahead from each of those railways. And there is a much larger billboard, and yet, we have no evidence that this area has any greater or lesser increase in traffic than any other signalised junction. So, and then, of course, all this as well. I'm not a great fan of advertising of any sort, but that's not what this is about. This is actually about, as we heard tonight from a colleague across the river, that this is such a vital part of delivering increased or making the cost of low-cost sporting facilities on the eastern shore. And as we all know, as we here, sitting here, struggling with our own recreational assets plan, here we are, right in the middle of our city, something that provides a huge benefit to our own people.
Thank you, councillor Mulder. Councillor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mayor. There's not much more to add to that other than to thank the deputies for the information they provided to us tonight, and to thank councillor Mulder for the work that he has done on this. And as someone that did support the Eastlands billboard when we were all told the sky was going to fall in if it happened, it would be very wrong of me not to support this, especially on the back of what we've heard tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kennedy. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor James?
Thank you. And may I say from the outset that I wasn't quick enough to get up to my feet to move the officer's recommendation, which was for refusal. And my contribution to this evening's debate will be along the lines that I believe that the proposal does not comply with clause C.1.6 as it does not achieve the objective of the standard because the design and sighting of the sign and its impact on visual amenity, visual amenity through its size, impact on the safe and efficient movement of vehicles within the road network. And we've all seen and noted the sign, what it's going to be located on the highway, and it's a huge sign on a very busy and very dangerous section of the Tasman Highway because there are three lanes and therefore can converge into one as you're going approaching that sign. And then there is another road that obviously continues beside it and then down under the highway onto the Easterwood Highway. So the other proposal that's been put forward by the officers in their recommended refusal in accordance with our standard rules, and that is in relation to the planning scheme, and they've identified that as the signs code because the sign does not achieve the objective of the standard due to an unreasonable effect on the safety appearance or efficiency of the road by not being compatible with the streetscape. So you need to look further than safety. You need to look at the particular provisions of the planning scheme in order to be able to make that decision. And in this particular case, it's going to have an impact, and it's been mentioned by the Department of State Growth that the section of the Tasmanian Highway is, in this particular section of the Tasmanian Highway, is already a demanding driving environment for motorists. There's a great deal of weaving activity with motorists entering the Rosney Hill interchange and westbound through that particular wanting to merge. The number of reported crashes exceeds the Australian Government's criteria for being categorised as a black spot. And the Australian Road, Oss Roads Research Report, and that AP reference, Impact on Roadside Advertising on Road Safety, states 'black spot locations should not be sites for roadside advertising, especially where crash sites are likely to be exacerbated', my apologies, 'by distraction', eighth example, rear end. So not only has the owner of the highway, the Department of State Growth, come out in opposition to this, and they have the right because it's their highway and they, for very reasons that they've stated, they don't want to see any more crashes, they don't want to see any fatalities, and that may happen. And already, we have very high fatalities on our roads within the state system up to the June. It's the highest in three years, as I understand it. And this, by the very nature, in my opinion, may lead to another fatality or may lead to a fatality and be worse than what has actually happened to date as far as crashes. With respect to the billboard on the corner of Bly and Rosney Hill Road, that's the advertising that Eastlands put up, that was recommended for refusal by the officers on the same grounds as the planning scheme has been mentioned in the officer's report tonight. And there were no representations, so council could, by the very nature, put forward another recommendation, and that was to support it. I did not support it because I agreed with the officer's recommendation that it was going to cause congestion, it was going to be a distraction, as this particular billboard will be, in my opinion. And even the Department of State Growth has mentioned that in their letter to us, in their email to us. So by the very nature of the billboard that's been obviously in use on the corner of a near Eastlands, that was recommended for refusal on the very basis of what has been put forward tonight as in the officer's recommendation. There were no representations in that case.
Thank you, councillor James. Councillor Warren, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And I'd like to thank our deputies for their contributions tonight. Unfortunately, we're sitting as a planning authority, so while I sympathise with the financial benefit this would give the club, that's not something we can take into account. And I remind my colleagues that that is not something that is covered by the planning scheme. So the points before us for discussion tonight are safety and visual amenity. And, look, it's not enough for me to say that this probably won't cause more crashes. I'm looking at the photo, and I can see those lanes merge. It's a place I drive often. I'm also surprised that councillor Mulder compared this with the road sign that gives you the distances or the times because they're not the same thing. This is an advertising board. The sole purpose of this board is to attract your attention, to distract you so that you read the message. It's flashing, it's colourful, it's designed to get your attention. So I can't see that that is in any way like the board that's already there, which is unpleasant and unnecessary, but it's, you know, it's not moving and it's not distracting. And now that we know what it is, we can completely ignore it. Whereas with an advertising sign, it's going to be forever changing. So people are going to keep looking at it. That's the nature of advertising. I also question, if we approve this one, what does that mean? Does that mean that we then have to approve every other application along this strip so that we turn into the Gold Coast or Las Vegas where we have sign after sign trying to get your attention as you're focused on trying to get to the bridge in the peak hour traffic? So for those reasons, I support the officer's original recommendation for refusal, and I will not be supporting this. I don't believe it's safe, and I don't believe that it is a satisfactory, low-impact on visual amenity.
Thank you, councillor Warren. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Walker, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a matter I've given a good deal of thought to over the past week. And yes, I was on council when the sign came on the corner of Bly Street and Rosney Hill Road. And just for clarification, could I ask you, through head of planning, have there been changes in standards or planning regulations with signage since that was approved in, I think, March of 2020?
Thank you, councillor Walker. Mr Marr, please.
Through you, Mayor. I actually can't tell you off the top of my head. Certainly, planning scheme has changed in terms of it's gone from the interim planning scheme to the Tasmanian planning scheme. But in relation to the intricacies of the code, sorry, I can't tell you off the top of my head.
Thank you, Mr Marr.
It was a sign approved, and I was one of the people that approved it. It was a, in making that decision, things had to be weighed up. But certainly was an area where the speed of traffic was quite different. And, you know, that was, that was a, I guess, a marginal decision at the time. What influenced that? We were a planning authority, so being influenced wasn't appropriate. It's the fact that that was right in the middle of COVID and the impact that that might have had on a major shopping mall when people wanted to stay away from them is a side point. In relation to this application, I'm not, I don't particularly have any issues with road signages and advertising in certain locations. So I'm not at all offended or challenged by the one that's on the rook as I drive along that and make my way to turn onto Elwick, well, to head past the Elwick Racecourse and indeed, over the Bowen Bridge. My problem with this sign is unfortunately for me, it feels like it couldn't be in a worse place along the Tasman Highway. And that weighs heavily on me. The peak cognitive load in driving between the chambers or, if you say, Eastlands and home for me, coming up the, would definitely be around this area every time. And it's not just a peak hour issue for me. In fact, probably other times can be harder because that's when traffic is able to be going at 70. You pass the, if you're wanting to head towards the Easterwood Highway, for example, then actually being in the far-left lane is often desirable because your first bit of conflict, if you were in, if you like, the right lane coming up Rosney Hill Road, is that you're the one that's going to be having to give way to the traffic that's already coming down the Tasman Highway already. And you have pretty marginal sightlines when you're doing that. It's not much fun, which is why a lot of people would prefer to be in the left lane. So there is, there is the weave of people making their way across two lanes, and that is occurring almost at this point. And then the other fact is it is an entirely rational and desirable movement if you're westbound to want to go from the centre lane into the left lane because that is the, you know, almost always green light as you get over the bridge unless there's a ship coming through. There was a lot of advice tent, and that is something that I've weighed up with what the officers have said. And I appreciate the calibre of the advice, and I appreciate the time taken by the applicants to try and step through things. But for me, when DSG have... But for me, when DSG have raised their concerns and their concerns principally seem to be about the site and the weave and the activity going there, I don't feel like I'm in a position to support the application. I sit as a planning authority and we make this decision as a planning authority. The fact that it's a road that my friends, family and wider community are using is, is countless within the safety. But ultimately, I'm taking the advice that DSG have provided and I'm not going to be supporting this alternate.
Thank you, councillor Walker. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Oh, Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and like colleagues, I thank the representatives for the deputies for coming along and speaking this evening. In another role, I involved with PCYC, so fully appreciate and understand how important it is to obtain and diversify your revenue streams to keep the doors open and do the work that you do, which is very important for the local community. So congratulate you on trying to be part of this initiative. Quite rightly, we do consider it as a planning authority, which you know all too well. And my inclination, having read all the material, is in fact to support the alternative put forward by councillor Mulder. I think it's been very well considered. I think when balancing the weight of the expert evidence that's been put forward, I'm very comfortable to in fact be held accountable for that expert advice. And in fact, my, my personal view is that I, I actually think that the, there'd be every chance on appeal if this were not to succeed, that there'd be a good chance of an appeal being upheld in favour of the proponent. However, that's just my personal view. When I look at what's already there, taking into account what's already in the area, what the state government have erected by, and, and of course, they were able to do that without going through the planning scheme in the same way that this is required to do. What we've already approved as a councillors at Eastlands, we all know the history. So I actually, I'm not too fussed about it being inconsistent from a planning perspective with what we already see in the local environment. I'm very comfortable around the crash safety stuff. And you've got to remember that the crash statistics have to be fairly unpacked because a lot of that stuff is actually the other side coming from the direction of Lindislan and the bridge back towards the eastern shore. That's where the majority of that data that is referenced actually occurs, not coming from eastern shore to the bridge. So you have to be, you know, quite particular when you're unpacking that data to give the evidence a fair play and a fair run. And when you're looking at someone who is as eminent as the independent expert that we've seen here, it should give everyone, in my view, it gives me the confidence. I urge colleagues to look at this very carefully because you have to ask yourself, what would we approve? If we didn't approve this, what would we approve? Because I can't see what the alternatives would be in the future for similar sorts of applications. So for that reason, I believe this should be supported under the provisions of our planning scheme, the alternate motion. And I think it satisfies all the necessary provisions that we would look to see supported under the planning scheme. And I urge colleagues to support the alternate that's been put forward by councillor Mulder.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Goyd, thank you.
I was planning on speaking tonight, I thought it was fairly clear cut and I really appreciate councillor Mulder bringing the alternate to, to here tonight. I particularly liked the A.3 and 4, that the sign must only be illuminated between sunrise and 11pm. Although for those of us that go to bed at seven o'clock, I probably could have sent it kickback a little bit. And the thing, in, in speaking with the community that engage with these signs, you know, like councillor Walker, who I very rarely go over the other side, so I haven't actually really seen, apart from the Eastlands one, haven't really seen many of these signs, but the, the main concern of the community is the brightness. So the fact that it, it has the adjustable illumination and also that it was a static image for me with zero transmission time between the images was really important in this alternate. As a survivor of a very serious car accident, I fail to see the issue, having read the expert reports, I completely agree with the independent expert that was provided and some of the crash data. And I think, you know, I don't, certainly don't think that a static image of 45 seconds is going to distract me and I'm fairly easily distracted. I also believe that the location actually probably couldn't be a better one. You're travelling in one direction and honestly, people are so used to toning out all of the background noise and that, I mean, we have the most spectacular view. How many times do you see the mountain? The only time I ever notice the mountain there is when there's snow on it. You know, so at the end of the day, I think it'll probably be a couple of weeks, just like the big ugly signs that the state government erected without, without, you know, consideration from the planning. I don't notice those anymore either, so, you know, if it brings in a revenue stream whilst not a part of the consideration, I'm quite happy to ignore them as I drive past, so, see colleagues support.
Thank you, councillor Goyd. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Mulder, write a reply, please.
Just a couple of issues. I was really careful to point out that when we talk about crashes, we're not talking about the number of crashes, and even though there's been many there, I'm talking about the seriousness of those crashes. Because if you just count the number of crashes, every supermarket car park would be a black spot. So, so the safety thing, and you have Professor Roberts, an expert in the visual distraction on highways, saying this is a low risk. And we've heard the proponent saying that in cases where he said, "No, this is inappropriate", they haven't proceeded. Yet here we have low overall crash rates, zero casualty in those, in those terms crash rates, and we're saying that it's the safety that's the issue. And you have the Eastland thing, which is a much more dangerous environment. I think, I really, I voted against that at the last council meeting because I did have concerns about that size, that distraction, fair in your face as you're trying to slow down, would cause crashes. And I was proven wrong. And when you talk about visual impact of the mountains, have a look at that. It's sandwiched between, with due respects, an ugly building of sheer straight metal next to a huge big overpass, right, which it's smaller than. And you can still see the mountain, you can even see the river. So, you know, I really don't get it. I think, and I hope, it's an unfortunate choice of advertising they chose to put up there because it introduces a completely different topic. But, and that's, so, so it's really about the accident. About the visage, I think I've, I've addressed that. And I would really like to say that we really do need to get crash history. My, my career has been in policing, I've done a lot of traffic and I've been to some horrendous traffic. The mention of the word crash brings back some of those awful memories. And, but I can say that they will, they will happen and they do happen. But then there's also, the, the fact is that if you look at the sighting of that sign, it's not actually distracting you away from the traffic. In fact, you will look slightly sideways. And as the experts will tell you in vision, actually, when you're, when you're not looking directly at something, you have a better case of picking up movement. In fact, by taking your eyes immediately off that car in front and looking sideways, you will detect movements that you wouldn't normally detect. So that's a piece of, of medical fact. So even if you do glance at the sign sideways, it will make you more aware in your peripheral vision of any movements on the road. But all that stuff aside, the crash history of this site?
Thank you, councillor Mulder. I'm going to put the alternate motion now, and that is that the planning application for the sign be approved, subject to the conditions and advice, as moved by councillor Mulder. All those in favour? Those against? So approved. Please invite councillor Hume back in to join us. And Oliver King, Mr Michael, we won't be offended if you decide to leave us now, but... You've done your tour. Thank you. Enjoy your evening. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Moving now on to item 7.3, that is the plant, local provisions, a schedule amendment request for 21 Matapo Street, Riston Vale. I'll call for a mover of the recommendation. Councillor James, thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, councillor Warren. Councillor James?
Yes, this has been long in coming, even though we've still got a, a number of steps to go through the process, but the actual amendment of the, of the local provisions meets the LPS criteria under section 34. I remember some years ago when we had some stormwater runoff down that section of Matapo and there was some concern and there were some properties that were actually awash as a result of the runoff. And this has been long in coming because it was going to address, in part, and that comes later of course, as part of the subdivision proposal, to address that stormwater runoff that has occurred and has caused some distress to people over time. So having said that, it's a great, well, recommendation to go to the next step and I seek council support.
Thank you, councillor James. Councillor Warren?
As per the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? There being none, there's no need for I to reply. I'll wait for councillor Mulder to take his seat. Yeah, no, he's aware of it. 7.3, councillor Mulder. I'll put the, the motion, which is the recommendation, all those in favour? Those against? Councillor Mulder's against. You're abstaining. All right, councillor Mulder's abstained. Glad I, all right, excellent. Thank you, councillor Mulder, as always. Moving on to item number four, reports of officers. 8.1, there's no petitions. 8.2, asset management. 8.2.1, the Glebe Hill Bushland Reserve Management Plan 2025 to 2035 for adoption. A call for a mover, please. Thank you, councillor Chong. Second, councillor Kennedy. Councillor Chong?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just very briefly, we've discussed this extensively in workshops and I think it's also been extensively discussed with the community. It should go out, it should be adopted and I seek my colleagues' support.
Thank you, councillor Chong. Councillor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mayor. Not much more to add to that, other than it's great work all round from everyone. It was great to see so much input from the community and this should provide significant benefits to the community and environment once it's adopted, so well done, please support.
Thank you, councillor Kennedy. Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Public bushland, of course, is a great resource value to the community as well as its natural heritage. Public bushland has inherent aesthetic, recreational, psychological, educational, conservation and scientific value. And importantly, it contributes to the landscape quality of an area and provides, in many cases, that buffer zone between residential development and sources of noise and pollution, the other things that go on in urban areas. Importantly, this updated plan is crucial for preserving biodiversity, protecting natural habitats and ensuring the long-term health of ecosystems. This plan, updated plan, is important in terms of habitat protection and restoration, ecosystem health and function, biodiversity conservation, corridors of wildlife movement, community engagement and education, cultural and heritage significance and sustainable management. So in essence, bushland reserve management plans are essential for ensuring that these valuable natural areas are protected and managed effectively and contributing to both environmental and community wellbeing. I think that the plan that's before us strongly reflects those desired outcomes and there's been a power of work that's been undertaken by the council staff in relation to preparing this document. And for this reason, I, you know, I thank them for their work and seek colleagues' support for the motion.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other colleagues wishing to speak on this motion? Councillor Chong, would you like a write-up reply?
The plans have been well articulated and seek my colleagues' support.
Thank you, councillor Chong. I'll, I'll put the motion, that is that we adopt the Glebe Hill Bushland Reserve Management Plan for 2025 through to 2035. All those in favour? That's unanimous. Thank you very much, colleagues. Moving now on to item 8.2.2, which is Clarence Cycling Strategy, moved by the deputy mayor. Is there a second? Thank you, councillor Mulder. Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Very pleased to move the Clarence Cycling Strategy, 25 to 2035, as council does play an essential role in planning, designing, promoting and of course regulating local infrastructure, including creating and maintaining an environment that's conducive to cycling. And this strategy is being developed to inform, plan for and prioritise, of course, you know, council's future capital investments when we make them and that affect, of course, the, the community wellbeing outcomes. Council is committed to creating great places for people through creating sustainable improvements that consider community engagement, participation, attraction, investment, visitation and livability. In creating places for people, council seeks to increase the number of people cycling by providing and promoting opportunities to cycle for recreation, sport and transport purposes. And council, of course, continues to play an important advocacy role in terms of participation, safety, amenity, connectivity and facilities. Increasing the number of people riding bikes in Clarence will lead to a wide range of economic, social, environmental and health benefits. And we all know all too well, the ongoing national issue around health and obesity and the fact that so many of us don't meet our daily activity guideline requirements. So I think communities with high levels of active transport do tend to experience lower rates of obesity and there are many ways for people to enjoy the health benefits of cycling. And of course, that's what this is all about at the heart of the cycling strategy. And I look forward to seeing the benefits of this new year, 10-year strategy, delivering those benefits for our community. And I am very pleased to be able to support the motion.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Mulder? Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor James?
Thank you. It's been long in the actual work in progress sort of pot of good tricks, if not tricks, good, of, of actual work in progress. And I do refer to page 24 of the appendix B. And it lists the high priority for 24, 2030. And it's interesting that the Clarence Forshore Trail, yes, a tick in the box. The Clarence Forshore Trail, Montague Bay, tick in the box. The Clarence Forshore Trail, Lion Kiln Point, Lindisfarne, tick in the box. Howra Road, Clarence Street to Howra Point, a question mark. Clarence Street, question mark, question mark, question mark. And then the Flagstaff Gully Link Road, no worries, a tick. And the Richmond Road Corridor, and a tick. What's interesting is that some time ago in this place, and I know what the following up comment's going to be in relation to the comment I'm about to make. And that is that we decided quite conclusively at the time that Clarence Street was an issue which was causing a lot of concern because of the very nature of putting a cycleway along Clarence Street at the same time maintaining off-street parking to enable people to actually utilise off-street parking because a lot of cars need to park off-street on Clarence Street. And then to have a cycleway basically on the outside of that parking or that white line and therefore opening car doors and the...
Excuse me, this point of, what, councillor Mulder?
A point of clarification, you referred to off-street parking. Oh, on, off-street parking, I think you meant on-street parking. People have to use on-street parking because there isn't off-street parking.
Thank you, councillor Mulder. Thank you, councillor James.
Thanks. On-street parking. So that caused a difficulty and we did have a number of representations. We'd had working groups that came out contrary to any cycleway along that section of Clarence Street on... Street, on-street parking, thank you, and now we have it as a high priority in twenty four, twenty thirty. So my question through you to the officer concerned, this is listed as a strategy, is that basically set in concrete, that when this does come up in our priority listing, that we have to basically follow the strategy and say that that needs to be considered and listed in the budget?
Thank you councillor James, Mr Graham, does that question, if you're able to provide an answer to that please, which was, we've got a strategy, if we adopt it, does that then tie us to making budget decisions? I think that's right councillor James, thank you, Mr Graham.
Through Mr Mayor, no, it doesn't, the strategy is an aim, an aspirational aim for us to create in the future, we know that it's flexible, and that some of the higher priorities might move to medium, depends where the, the community is, all of these will involve investigations in terms of community consultation designs, preliminary designs, they'll all come to council through a budget process, first of all, thank you for putting me on a timer. They'll always come to a, a, a budget council for approval before we proceed on these projects.
Thank you, Mr Graham, just also note too, it's a strategy from twenty twenty five to twenty thirty five, not twenty twenty four to twenty thirty, so thank you councillor James, is there any time left, Miss Ellis? There is, okay, councillor James, let's start the clock, Miss Ellis, thank you.
The, and I appreciate those comments, because my next question is that would we be considering any high priority of those projects in the forthcoming budget?
Well, I would have thought that's a matter for, for this council to consider in the environment of the upcoming budget, we've just gone through a budget process, that's something we'll be looking at next year. Anything else councillor James?
Oh, well, I was just wondering as to whether or not there is a, is a consideration of those high priority trails and cycleways, those going to be listed in next year's budget? They are listed as a high priority.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, but, but coming back to Mr Graham's earlier response, that that tends a matter for us to then prioritise as a council, within the resources we have available to us, what we decide to proceed with, so the officers will come with a whole raft of recommendations, you know, it's our job then as director of the organisation to make decisions as to what the priorities are.
I understand that.
So, so, so we can't provide an answer councillor James?
Okay, yes, that's a question, that's been answered, thank you, so.
Does that clock reset, Miss Ellis? Thank you, I still have a moment.
And also the question of Howra Road, Clarence Street to Howra Point, is there enough, this is a high priority project as well, will that require substantial construction of the, of the roadway or off the roadway to be able to meet a suitable width for cycleway from Clarence Street to Howra Point?
Thank you councillor James, Mr Graham?
Through you, Mr Mayor, council has approved design funds for majority of this section of the road, so certainly when we've done the preliminary designs, we'll be informing council on, on what would be recommended.
Thank you, Mr Graham, any, anyone else wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Walker, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I was quite disappointed in the, around twenty fourteen, when I put up a motion about a road safety bike track for Clarence, something that other areas had, the one at Drew Point was incredibly valued, only to find this council decided to stymie it and put it on the table. I was delighted when the twenty fourteen council came along and actually supported that motion, and the track was indeed built in Howra and around Wentworth Street, and it is a, is a really valued and cherished resource for the community. We want to encourage cycling, it's one of the many modes of transport, and again, it's also a, a form of transport along with other ones, and we have to try and balance things and make everything work. This document is a document that telegraphs aspirations and expectations, it is a, if you like, a manifesto, the cycling manifesto, and it's a written declaration of intentions, motives and views, and the motives and the views are pretty clear to, for their, for everyone to see. Clarence Street going down to fifty, having, having parking outside residents taken down, having things intensified, having it slowed down, and it's, it's a high priority thing, it's very upfront about it. So when you decide to back this tonight, understand that that is the aspiration and expectation that you are endorsing. Previous councils have said one thing, but it's, was taken off the table, it's now back on the table in an exceedingly obvious way. If you're not sure, then abstain, because we can always come back some other time and take some things out of it, so that there can be wider acceptance, but make no mistake, you know, very, very articulate advocates are going to be able to use this document as it is to, to push for causes, because they're right there in front with it. I have some concerns around the Lion Kiln Point, one which is listed as a high priority too, this is not a smart place for, 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 for high-speed cycling and commuting, this is an area that is, a path that is used by a lot of elderly residents, and they're quite often a bit concerned with some of the speed of cyclists in that area, and I'm a bit concerned with what I read there, that it didn't, there's not much around the behaviour side of how we, if you like, really, you know, get the, get the A to B transport cyclists up and on their way, that's one thing, but there's, there's very little around how do we, how do we front up and be muskled around calming and lower speeds in areas where that's required to, and I think that's a, that's a deficiency. So I won't be supporting this manifesto, I suspect it's going to get through with the majority, but you are endorsing Clarence Street and the changes that's being made by endorsing this document.
Thank you councillor Walker, councillor Hume.
Thank you Mayor. I just wanted to put in a plug for action six of the plan, which is developing cycling links to transport hubs such as park and rides, bus malls and ferry terminals, and I focus in particular on the ferry terminals, which, you know, the, the Department of State Growth in their ferry strategy are telling us are not meant to be park and ride facilities, but effectively they, they are acting as one because that's what people are trying to do, because there's a lack of alternatives, and as a result, if we don't provide parking at those facilities in accordance with that, that strategy, then we're going to find people parking in places we don't want them parking and, and causing, causing havoc. But, you know, the, the state government and DSG, really in terms of, if, if that's what the ferry terminals are meant to be, if they're meant to be a connection with other forms of public and active transport, then they really have to put their money where their mouth is, but it's good that, that we're looking at developing those links, and, and I also encourage the department to step up in terms of the bus links as well. So, so it's good to see that as part of the, the plan, trying to establish those links between cycle paths, ferry terminals, but also bike, bike to bus connections, so that we can develop that sustainable and active transport that takes the pressure off the congestion in our roads, thank you.
Thank you councillor Hume, any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? There being none, deputy mayor, write a reply please.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor, I appreciate and understand that not everybody appreciates all aspects of every policy document that comes before council, and in a way, that's almost as it should be, they are ongoing documents, as has already been articulated, the sorts of things, the operational things will come before council on a case-by-case basis as they always do, whether they're requiring budgetary impacts and decisions, those sorts of things come in the fullness of time, naturally, there's always capacity for individual councillors to bring forward their own ideas to, through the policy process as we run them outside of our, our council meetings, but I do accept and respect the different views that people have, and nevertheless seek colleagues' support.
Thank you deputy mayor, I put the motion, that is the recommendation, that council adopt the Clarence Cycling Strategy, two thousand twenty five through to two thousand and thirty five, all those in favour? Those against? And councillor James is abstaining, thank you, all right, that's so passed, yes, yes, she was, yes, oh, sorry, you're abstained as well, sorry, can we recommit this vote please, all those in favour, hands straight up please, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, thank you, those against? Thank you, so councillor James, councillor Goine are abstaining, all right, thank you, so passed, thank you colleagues. Moving now on to eight point three, there are no financial management issues, moving on to eight point four, governance, eight point four point one, members of council's consolidated meeting procedures policy, there's a recommendation before us, I'll call for a mover of the recommendation please, councillor Kennedy, seconded by councillor Hume, thank you, councillor Kennedy.
But, Mayor, I have read this fairly thoroughly, and I have no issues with whatsoever, and I seek council support.
Thank you councillor Kennedy, councillor Hume.
Um, I, I support these changes, recognising that it is in accordance with the, the meeting regulations that are set down by the state government, but I do have some concerns about the, I, I do so because, you know, that's what we're, we're presented with, but I do have some concerns about what the state government has presented, in that, yes, we're moving into the twenty first century, recognising an as-of-right, you know, right to parental leave without being at the mercy of your colleagues, and while when you do apply for a leave of absence, you would, you would hope and expect that your colleagues would be reasonable and provide a leave of absence in the situations that warrant it, there are a number of other things that I believe should be as-of-right, for example, there, there's no as-of-right entitlement to leave for serious illness, that's one where you are at the mercy of your colleagues, and, and as I said before, while you would expect and hope that they would be reasonable, there is the potential for councillors on this council or any other council to make a political decision, a rather mean-spirited one, to deny a colleague, an application for, well, to deny a colleague leave, I'm not suggesting anyone here would do that, but, but I'm saying the potential is there. Also, after we came out of Covid and, and we had some changes to the regulations there that allowed some flexibility in terms of attending remotely, you know, once again, this is the twenty first century, we have the technology, I believe it's reasonable to expect that colleagues would be present in the chamber for meetings when they can be present, but if there are people who have to travel for work, I don't see attending remotely, you know, a, as, as a problem, it's something that we, we now have the, the technological capabilities to do. So, you know, while these are the, the regulations that the Tasmanian government's presented us with, and, and we have to adopt them, there are some things that I, I think, you know, need to change moving forward, and let's get with the twenty first century, thank you.
Thank you councillor Hume, deputy mayor, thank you.
Mr Mayor, like councillor Hume, I also support the motions before us on the basis that they have come out of the statutory process, with the changes to the regulations, and therefore we must, but I have and, and do wish to foreshadow that I have had discussion with council officers, some colleagues would remember some time ago that we passed a motion in this place to go to Legash around these as-of-right leave provisions, and it, it, it did not just relate to people around paternity leave or those sorts of things, it did extend to things like personal illness leave for those sorts of matters, that was encapsulated in that particular motion that we've already passed in this place, unfortunately, wasn't picked up in these regulations, but it would be my intention to bring back, that hopefully nothing stops us as our own council to actually adding those extra layers to our own provisions, just needing some time to make sure that they will not be inconsistent, I don't think they will be, but naturally need to go through the process for our offices to ensure they won't, but it would be my intention at a time in the future to bring, to bring forth some recommendations to add some layers that provide those additional as-of-right provisions at a future time wherever we possibly can to, as councillor Hume said, bring us, bring us into contemporary operations and to ensure we don't have those sorts of concerns moving forward. I support the motion.
Thank you deputy mayor, any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Can you lift me to your feet councillor Walker? No, all right, thank you, I misread you all. All right, okay, all right, there's no other colleagues, councillor Kennedy, you write a reply please.
Thank councillor Hume and the deputy mayor for their contributions, and I think deputy mayor's points were very valid in the fact that we're not mean-spirited around this table, and I'm, I'm sure we can make things work into the future, so thank you, I seek colleagues' support.
Thank you councillor Kennedy, so we're voting on the recommendation, which is that council A revokes its consolidated meeting procedures adopted at its meeting of the eighth of July two thousand and five, and approves the amended consolidated meeting procedures two thousand twenty five, provided as attachment one to the associated report, and B, the council revokes its audiovisual recording of council meetings policy, adopted at its meeting of the thirteenth of July two thousand fifteen. I put the motion, all those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you colleagues. Moving on now to item eight point four point two, which is a purchase of thirty Gordon's Hill Road, Rosney Park, I think age might have had you there, I think councillor Walker, I think councillor James might have just beaten you to the punch. You need a second, councillor James? So what are you moving? The recommendation? Excellent, is there a second please? Councillor, councillor Kennedy, thank you, all right, councillor James, the floor is yours, thank you councillor Kennedy.
Yeah, but thank you, and look, I did request that the matter of the purchase of thirty Gordon's Hill Road, Rosney, for twenty-three point five million plus stamp duty, and the transfer fee at one point zero five million, be included in open council as far as respect being transparent in the decision-making of council, and in my understanding, no, it's not my understanding, in other times when we have had any amendment to our budget, it has always been handled or discussed within the confines of the, of the open council in that respect. So council made that decision some time ago, and this motion is noting the recent purchase. The fact of the matter is that I don't want to debate that, because it's passed and it's been approved by my colleagues, and that's a fait accompli, but by moving this motion, I wanted to note that that has happened, that council has bought the building and will be consolidating its, some of its offices outside of this particular complex into that area, together with some of the movement of staff into the new building at thirty Gordon's Hill Road. It does raise the question that council was able to dig into its internal cash reserves and its asset, asset renewal reserve, and out of that came twenty, well, approximately twenty-four million, and that is now, as I understand it, round about the seventy-two million in reserves. The question I have in relation to that is that the government may ask the question or put the question and says, well, look, you found twenty-four million to buy and pay cash for the building at thirty Gordon's Hill Road, why then have you, or why do you consider external borrowings for Pass Road and for some of these other projects, including Bayview, College Sporting Complex, and that contribution is in total sixty million, of which council has to contribute as part of this process, twenty million, so why wouldn't the government start to say you're a flush with funds, and therefore have the, and put that to us, that really, as far as any external borrowings need to be going through the process, that you should dig into your internal borrowings or cash reserves and pay for the upgrade of Pass Road? the upgrade of Pass Road or the Bayview College or the Lenders Farm Sporting Complex? So these are the questions I think may be answered. And I hope that when we come to the next round of meetings, that we, in our budget process, that we shouldn't nearly be surprised if the state government or the federal government, because they want twenty. We've asked the federal government for twenty million for the Bayviews, uh, complex, as well as the state twenty and for our contribution, twenty million. So let's not put it past either of those governments, um, state or federal, to say, well, hang on, you've just forked out twenty, uh, twenty-four million in relation.
Excuse me, councillor James, I've given you a lot of latitude here. It's one of relevance. It's, it's a very, um, you're, you're very broad brush at the moment, um. And, uh, if I could just caution you not to give the state or federal government any ideas, um, please just stick to the recommendation, which is one that you moved. And that is that we note the recent purchase of thirty Gordon's Hill Road for the price, and that's the motion that you moved. Please just, uh, contain your comments to what is before the chair.
Okay, well, again. And as, as I have outlined, this has been to basically say that the council has bought the buildings. And we will be doing some, uh, renovations to that as part of the recent budget process, which is the twenty-five, twenty-six. There has been one point four million that's going to be redirected towards some refurbishment of the buildings at thirty Gordon's Hill Road. And also we will be anticipating that there will be some rental, um, or from the lesses that will continue to pay rent, uh, for various term up to, I think, the end of their lease in January twenty twenty-seven. So there will be some income that will be coming in, but at the same time, we'll have to spend some funds uh, towards, um, uh, some of the renovations in relation to the buildings at thirty Gordon's Hill Road. This is noting the recent purchase, and I seek council support.
Like, like an absolute pro. Well done councillor James, thank you. Um, I'd now like to call on the second, councillor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I didn't actually plan on speaking to this or even thinking that I needed to second it, but it's probably in my time on council, one of the most positive things that we've actually achieved as a group, and it was painless, seamless to actually get to where we've got to. So of course, I'm supporting this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kennedy. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Mulder?
So I know councillor James is flat out trying to get to his feet earlier. Um, just a few issues that, um, I have, and I, and I've supported this. And thank heavens this council over two or three years, over, sorry, a decade at least that I'm aware of, has resisted the temptation to spend what amounted to possibly sixty-plus million to refurbish this building, to create a town hall and to make it fit for purpose. So let, let's not get too carried away with the fact that we found something that would do us better, that's even built for twenty-five million. And I think it's a good buy, and the potentials are there. The potentials are there. We're going, we, we, we're going to avoid what was estimated to be twen- we could avoid what was estimated to be a twenty million dollar art centre on the, on the old golf course, and I use that word advisedly. Um, and, right, and we could convert this building into the town hall, the council chambers, and maybe the public area for arts and culture displays, performances to supple- to, to complement and in fact outgrow the Rosney Barn, which clearly is far too small for any of those sorts of events. So the opportunities are huge. The opportunities for this are huge, and the long-term savings are huge. I'm sure we'll find, I'm sure the staff will find a way of actually, um, enhancing these buildings to make sure that, uh, all the money is eventually spent, but this is a win-win. And I do note, and it's, it is part of the considerations, um, and it's not straying off the line, because on page four, four, six, it's talked about a purchase price. While the purchase has been fully funded through cash holdings at this time, council may consider external loan funding at a later time, should it need to improve its cash position. So, um, I have some concerns about that, because why would we be doing external loan funding when we have ho- uh, you know, an infrastructure renewal fund, which we could do an internal borrowing from, so that it's us that makes the money off the interest, not the bank? And, but the external loan funding. And, um, and if, um, um, straying for a moment with your lead, Mr. Mayor, um, if state and federal governments are eyeing off us, this is the result, and I noticed Mr. Paul is here, who's the architect, of putting money in the bank for future needs. So actually, this is all possible because this council has had a trajectory of refi- of fiscal responsibility in terms of not spending the money and then recovering it, but saving the money and then spending it. And that's, and that's the great opportunity here. And it's why, as I said the last time, I have concerns that we will start to walk away from that strategy in our financial strategy. Um, but that's a matter for another time. Look, I'm pleased that we've had an opportunity to debate this, because this is the sort of thing that had to be debated in council. I know the constraints about property purchases and contracts and how they all have to be confidential. But at the first opportunity, I welcome this opportunity to, um, to say, here was an opportunity and we seized it. Thank heavens we didn't go down the other path, because we would have been in a mess now. We would have been spending money all over the place, building this thing, and the perfect jewel would have been sitting vacant up the road.
Hey, councillor Mulder, I will just point out that I think Mr. Parton might take some of the credit too for the strong financial position, and Miss Murrell and her team.
But he's not here to talk.
He'll be watching. No, he's just texting me, actually. Uh, any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Walker, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, uh, did have aspirations to move this, uh, motion, but always happy for councillor James to have the last word. And also to note that again, um, his efforts towards this, if you like, sitting on the agenda. Um, one of the reasons I was happy to support it, um, is that I, I don't think we should be shy about it. I think we should be, um, upfront. And, and I guess in having those discussions, um, part of them is what is the square me- office square meterage of equivalent councils? And if you look at Loncyston, if you look at, um, Glenorkie, uh, certainly if you look at Hobart, um, big, big square meterage. We're on a relative postage stamp. This is a way to, um, do a couple of things. It's a, it's a way to make provision for the future. It is a way to, uh, stop spending money in the commercial retail precinct within Clarence and bring uh, all our departments into the one roof, um, freeing up office space internally, uh, within, within Rosney for, for other is enterprises, and, um, for us indeed, saving money on those bills. Uh, there are also other organisations that are probably likely to be using the site. Um, perhaps for a short time, perhaps indeed for a long time. And one of the, one of the great things about this, um, versus working on a site while you're building is that, um, we have time. We have time to plan and be prudent with this purchase. Um, and we have tenants in place till twenty-seven. Um, so, uh, I wanted to be upfront with the fact that I think we should, it was the right purchase. Um, and I think, uh, I don't think it should go without words either that we, we dodged a bullet. And uh, whilst I'd note, Mayor, that councillors Darko and Mulder weren't there on the meeting of eighteenth of March, twenty twenty-four. Um, I think thanks should go to councillors Kennedy, Goine, James, Hunter and Richie, who, along with me, were not at all comfortable with proceeding down the track that was looking towards sixty million. That was going to be a huge burden on, uh, the council, uh, ratepayers. It was going to uh, straightjacket our future. And purgatory is a place where you work whilst a construction is occurring at the same place. Uh, I've done that in a residential setting, and I've done it in a health setting. And I don't think it would have been at all pleasant, uh, in a municipal setting either. So that bullet was dodged by my mind on that meeting of the eighteenth of March. And I thank those colleagues, um, that had the foresight to stick with it, because, uh, we have been in a difficult place, have we not? But our future is looking good, uh, because we didn't.
Thank you councillor Walker. Any other colleagues wishing to enter the debate? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I agree with councillor Walker that, um, this is a decision taken uh, by this council that's significant. Might be the most significant decision that we make during the term of this council. And should be telegraphed publicly. I'd like to see a little bit more of that, uh, happen, because some people still, still aren't aware of the purchase and indeed perhaps not yet fully aware when, when the time comes to fully articulate the benefits that will flow, uh, once we get ourselves to that position, that will flow as a result of this purchase. And, um, yes, I did, I did support, uh, the motion in March for the reasons that were articulated, and, um, I stand by that. And I think that this decision uh, does set us up more appropriately for the future and to be able to engage in the sorts of activities, not only just in terms of accommodation for staff, but future, uh, capacity for things like cultural precincts, those sorts of zones in a whole different way than, uh, perhaps the options uh, that were being put forward prior to this being available. But of course, you've got to make decisions, um, on the information that's available to you and when opportunities like that come along, uh, fortunately, uh, through good management, and this council has a history of living within its means. This council has a history of delivering budgets, uh, that, that are balanced. And it's for that reason uh, that we're able to get the hay out of the barn, uh, when we need to, um, and when opportunities like this come knocking. So I hope moving forward, the key thing is that we're able to actually, uh, fully articulate to the community uh, what an absolutely outstanding decision this has been and the sorts of, uh, benefits that will float to the community into the future, and I look forward to seeing them, and I support the motion.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Anyone else wishing to enter the debate? All right, before I call on, um, councillor James, I will just, uh, uh, lead to the debate as the councillor, as your mayor, and just make the point that, um, uh, just to ensure that there's, uh, no misconception out there, that we have been upfront and honest with our community since day one. As soon as we made that decision back in April, a media release was issued that night. Uh, that was then published on our website. Uh, this was also, uh, recently published, um, in the, uh, July edition of the Eastern Shore Sun, in the Mayor's Message, also in the recently released, uh, Clarence News. On top of that, it's also in our annual plan. It's something that, um, uh, you know, it was some, something that we talked about with people at the Budget Breakfast as well. So, um, let's be very clear, at all times this council has been, uh, open and transparent with our community. Uh, once we made the decision, uh, to purchase thirty Gordon's Hill Road. Um, uh, now it's fair that, uh, to say that, um, even the purchase price was also provided, um, at that time as well. So I understand why you've, uh, uh, asked for this motion, councillor James, and council had no difficulties in, um, um, providing the opportunity tonight for colleagues to talk to this. Uh, but just to be very clear, that there's nothing that this council needs to hide at all. It's a very good purchase. It's future-proofing our city. And, um, so with those few words, I'll call on you now, if you're writing a reply. Thank you councillor James.
Look, and a- again, um, my comment was that when you are amending a budget, and it happened in April, twenty twenty-five, it was to amend the twenty-four, twenty-five budget to allow the purchase of the property at thirty Gordon's Hill Road for the sum of. It needed to be brought out into the open, into this particular forum, in order to be able to follow convention. And that is when you're amending the budget, it ought to be in open council. And we're, we're doing that tonight. And that's the very basis of noting the recent purchase and for the price. So it's out there and it's the best we can do, and there shouldn't be any need to go uh, back and say, well, it wasn't, um, necessary to do this, because we are following, as I mentioned, the normal process. The only concern I have about it is, we funded this from cash holdings, and council may, the per, um, uh, council may consider external loan funding at a later date, should it need to improve its cash position. So having said that, it's here in the black and white. And all I'm trying to point out here is that when you are tapping into the reserves, which have been built up and added to over the years, then we need to make sure that we are spending those, those funds on what the asset renewal reserve is all about. I seek council support.
Thank you councillor James. I'll put the motion, that is that we note the recent purchase at thirty Gordon's Hill Road, Rosney. All those in favour? Thank you. So carry. Moving now on to item, uh, nine point one, motions on notice. Councillor Goine? Uh, seconded by councillor Walker, thank you. Councillor Goine?
Uh, tangara is the Aboriginal word meaning let's get away together, and it's a name given to the Tasmanian multi-user recreational trail network. In the Clarence municipality, the network covers from Cambridge and Five Mile Beach to South Arm, covering roughly three hundred kilometres. The Tangara Trail Network in Tasmania has a rich history dating back to the seventies, initially conceived as a safe and accessible trail system for our local horse riders, before evolving to ca- evolving to cater to walkers, dog walkers and mountain bike riders in the eighties, and ultimately becoming the all-inclusive Tangara recreational trails in two thousand and four, embracing the increased diversity of our trail users. To be noted, every section of the Tangara Trail, the roughly three hundred kilometres, is inclusive of dogs in some capacity. Tonight's motion seeks to do nothing more than to clarify ambiguity within the current dog management policy and not to amend the policy. Council will soon go out to community consultation for the future of dogs in Clarence. And during that time, we will not only consult with the public, but I am sure many professionals in salt marsh conserva- conservation to determine a path forward on how best to manage the delicate balance of the native flora and fauna, whilst including accessibility for humans and their animal companions. The signs relevant to my motion, as Mr. Paul kindly brought to your attention, have only been installed for a few short weeks. The dog management policy in twenty twenty-one requires clarification, and with community consultation on the horizon, I move that we remove the recently installed signs and replace them with dogs on leash on the trail only, to support the sensitivity of this area. I seek my colleagues' support.
Thank you councillor Goine. Uh, councillor Walker?
And, uh, Mr. Mayor, basically, um, politics is problem-solving, is a, is a mantra I often go by. Um, a problem has occurred here, uh, and, and this is a way of solving it and moving things forward until such time as the Dog Management Act gets updated. I indeed thank the contributions of Mr. Paul tonight. Um, and, and note how much this, uh, area is valued, not, uh, on Ross Common itself, not on the salt marsh itself, but on the track that is the Tangara Trail. So, uh, seek colleagues' support.
Thank you councillor Walker. Any other colleagues wishing to jump in? Councillor James, thank you. Then councillor Mulder.
Yes, look, uh, thank you, and, uh, I've been following this very closely, and there's been a number of submissions. And one I received today from, uh, a, um, geologist, oh no, yeah, zoologist, sorry, uh, U-Taz. And his comments are basically that that's a, a thin wire fence that really separates the bushland from the trail. And therefore, um, on what basis are we assured that the dogs will be kept on a lead in that sort of area that's fairly remote from the, the gaze, I would suggest, of uh, potential dog ranging as some part of following up on this particular motion once, if they say it is approved. And what this motion is about, of course, in a nutshell, is to relu- re- remove no-dog signage and replace it with dogs on lead on, on track. And these are the important words, on track. So what is to say, and perhaps a question I could put through you, Mr. Mayor, to the appropriate officer? Uh, pending the outcome of the upcoming dog management policy review, how are we able to, um, sort of, I don't like using the word police, but how are we able to make sure that those dogs? but how are we able to make sure that those dogs that are on lead on this particular track, so close to a one-wire fence, which obviously is on the racecourse conservation, flat conservation area? So that's my question, please.
Thank you, councillor James. Mr. Brennan?
Through you there, as we would do with any other parts of the Tangara Trail or any other parts of the dog management department required enforcement. Supplements, if I may.
Certainly, Mr. Brennan, if you could stay there, please. I think there might be another one. Through me, councillor James, thank you.
Yes, given that this is pending the upcoming dog management policy review, would you consider extra monitoring of this? Because there is the potential for dogs to be off-leash or go into racecourse flats, conservation area. So would it be possible for extra monitoring of that area in order to be able to make sure that dogs are on lead, on track, up until such time as I presume we would amend our dog management policy?
Thank you, councillor Brennan. Actually, what I'll do, I'll call him, so he gets a big dollar, so, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. In response to that question, councillor James, we need to recognise that this area has been used by dog walkers for some substantial period of time. Council has resourced the ranges to patrol beaches, patrol trails and so forth. We will continue to do that, and obviously, as new signage goes in, we'll spend some time making sure that that's clearly understood.
Thank you, sir. Councillor James, anything else? Wonderful, thank you. Councillor Mulder, did you wish to contribute to this debate? Thank you. Anyone else wishing? Councillor Warren, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll always put the environment first. I've had a phone call from a very distressed local who's seen dogs on the salt marsh on two occasions, causing havoc. I would be more comfortable with the no-dog sign staying until we review the policy.
Thank you, councillor Warren. Councillor Daca, and then councillor Hume.
Yeah, I cannot support this at all. I'm completely opposed to it. In my view, sensitive areas need to be protected from increasing human impacts. The same email that was referenced by councillor James noted that the scent of dogs, the sight of dogs, the sound of dogs can be extremely distressing to vulnerable wildlife. And the fact that this has been ongoing in the area doesn't mean that it's something that should keep going. He cited experience of Bonorong of Bandeguts, Padrus and Betongs abandoning their joys after they have encountered the scents of dogs. I believe that, as noted by others, those fences are insufficient to stop a dog from bolting. So if you lose control of the leash, the dog goes out into the racecourse flats, suddenly they're off the track. I don't believe that that's actually sufficient in terms of fencing to prevent that from happening. And I believe we should uphold the policy terms where it says, tracks cutting through bushland reserves will carry the same dog exercise regulations as the preserve in which they are located. Because I don't believe it contradicts the following sentence, which says in bushland reserves, dogs are encouraged to remain on form tracks. Because my view of that would be that the encouraged to remain on form tracks would only apply if they weren't prohibited. So that's the view that I'm taking based on that apparent contradiction. I just ask that so few areas are free from dog impacts. There are so many places throughout the municipality that dog owners can take their dogs for walking. We have dedicated dog parks. We are building a great new dog park. I would ask the dog owners, please respect the environment and simply go a little bit further afield to look after our vulnerable wildlife.
Thank you, councillor Daca. Councillor Hume, please.
I expect councillor Goin will make a similar point in her right of reply, but I think it's important to recognise that what we are debating here is the signage and whether it, whether it is consistent with the policy as it stands now, not what the actual policy should be. That is a matter for the upcoming review of the dog management policy. And what we're seeking to do is clarify what the rules are. If you're voting against this motion, then what you are essentially saying is, for the sake of discouraging dog owners, let's leave some signage up that's misleading so that they think that they can't walk their dogs in this area. Yeah, rather than actually putting signs up that tells them what they are actually allowed to do. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hume. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I thank councillor Goin, and I know other colleagues who have done work engaging with members of the local community in respect of this matter since the new signs emerged and caused a slight ruckus in the community. So this is, I think, a very practical and sensible approach as we look at, which I think in the CEO's comments, there is, there has been a little bit of conflict in relation to the application of the provisions of the policy, notwithstanding that there's been a practice in place for a very, very long time. And in fact, I have to say, prior to this, and I'm happy through you, Mr. Mayor, to be corrected by council officers, I've not received a single complaint in my term on council in relation to dogs in this area. I'd be happy to be corrected if there are any others or for council to be advised. So it certainly hasn't been an issue in terms of dog mismanagement or dogs being wildly running around in the reserve. Haven't had any issues like that brought to my attention. So I'm very comfortable that what councillor Goin's brought forward is a very sensible solution to enable people to continue to comfortably engage in the activities they have been until such time as council works through the process properly and appropriately. And it may be that there's no change at all, other than clarification around the signage, which is what I'd probably expect to see going forward, but nevertheless, we'll let the process run its course. I support the motion.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Councillor Goin, your right of reply, please.
Thank you, colleagues. I appreciate all of your contributions. As councillor Hume said, this is just a review of the current policy, and obviously, we'll be able to consult with people like the gentleman sent us an email today. I will also make the clarification that I also have a rescue and rehabilitation background. I also have a diploma in dog behaviour, emotion and cognition. I will also point out that the track is 3.36 metres wide with a ring lock fence, which currently council determines to be adequate fencing between you and your neighbour for a large portion of the trail. It's probably one of the more secure areas for dog walking. And as we know, there's a sensitive flora and fauna throughout the whole of our areas. So this area, if anything, I believe is probably one of the few areas that actually should be. Any dogs can jump any fences. We've had dogs escape from the Clarence Street Dog Park. And also, all of these houses, the majority of homes in Clarence have, I don't know what the statistics are, have dogs. If there's dogs running around in a sensitive salt marsh, it doesn't mean that they've escaped off a lead. They're probably more likely to have escaped from a backyard adjoining it. As far as the scent of dogs deterring marsupials and making them drop their young, those marsupials can actually scent dogs for over a kilometre away in still wind conditions. So every single house that has a dog along that area, if those marsupials are going to drop their young, will do so simply by dogs living in that area. So a dog walking along the trail is not going to have any impact, and they should also, marsupials should be able to distinguish between a threat and also the general presence of smell. So that, as much as I appreciate that opinion, it's not necessarily effective of the actual considerations of having dogs in the area. We build homes in these areas. We farm more impact than we add dogs, you know. We are catering for a community that has dogs. So allowing dogs on a trail is certainly not going to impact any more greatly than anything else. I also reiterate the fact that we are now separating the peninsula. I live on the peninsula. Separate in the community. If I want to get to Lordedale and I want to go to the shop, I don't want to have to get in a car. We're talking constantly about having, you know, better for the environment transport options, and yet you're stopping me from being able to walk my dog to go to the shop. So as a peninsula resident, it is absolutely separating this community. I will also add that that is a cat colony hotspot. And how hypocritical of this council would it be to not allow a dog on a leash on a fenced area whilst we are not policing or managing the cats in a hotspot in that area doing far more damage than a dog on lead would ever be able to? So I just want to seek again that colleagues' support. And there is really, honestly, I believe, no reason to not support this motion.
Thank you, councillor Goin. Colleagues, I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Against? So carry. Thank you. Moving now on to 9.2. Councillor Chong, is there a second for councillor Chong's lift the tone? Thank you, councillor Kennedy. Councillor Chong, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. A year ago, following the notice on motion by councillor Kennedy, we committed to address poor behaviour and conduct towards both councillors and council staff. The kindness campaign promoted kindness and compassion to all in the community, pointing out that we are your neighbours, your friends, your fellow gym junkies or parents. This motion also committed us to work with the sector on campaigns to ensure consistency and collaboration. Lift the Tone is a local government association-driven campaign that has recently been launched after its finding that almost 80% of elected members who responded had experienced abuse or intimidation from members of the community. This notice on motion asks us to build on the previous one by supporting the campaign which commits us to promote civility in public debate, refrain from abusive language and behaviour online or in person, encourage others to engage respectfully. And surely, those are all attributes that we would like to see throughout the community. There are a number of councils that have already signed on to the Lift the Tone pledge, including, if you'd like the list, Breakaday, Hobart, Leborgan Spring Bay, Kentish, Kingverla Trope, Meander Valley, Sorel and Waratah Winyard. I seek my councillors' colleagues' support.
Thank you, councillor Chong. Councillor Kennedy? Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a contribution to this, to the debate, please? Councillor James?
Thank you. The, on page 453, the last paragraph and the last sentence, the Lift the Tone campaign aligns well with council's kindness campaign and should be supported by this council and others in the sector, unquote. So our contribution, and presumably what councillor Kennedy was able to and achieve full support at that time, has already been addressed. And why is it necessary to sort of go through the process? And again, to use the movers' words, our council and many others are experiencing increasing levels of toxicity in public and political discourse, while ensuring that everyone has a voice, engaging in debate, it's a vital part of democracy. When comments and actions shift from honest and respectful to abusive, they become harmful, unquote. I'm not experiencing that. I thought that after the kindness campaign that was passed, that we are now experiencing, from within our midst and from outside, and let's put the high-performance centre to one side, because I think that basically what drove this kindness campaign, campaign to get through council, because there may have been, I'm not saying there was, there may have been some untimely and some comments that were made to the elected representatives because of the way they voted on that particular matter. So that's behind us. We've moved on. We've now accepted the fact that the umpire's made its decision on the hype on Rosney Parklands and Charles Hand Park, and like sawsome limbs have been removed. When I was walking the dash hound through there the other day, and it's being looked after as it ought to be by council outside labour force. So why is this necessary? It's just making it come out in the open again. I don't think there is that level of toxicity that is perhaps being directed from any of us or towards any of us. And I find that it's travelling along quite nicely. So look, for the reasons of blowing this out of all proportion and resolves to continue to challenge the normalisation of abuse against elected representative and officers and uphold exemplary standards of public and political debate in all it does, I will not support this because I think it's untimely, it's misdirectional, and it's just opening up a wound, and therefore I think it's unnecessary. I will not support it.
Councillor Goin, thank you.
I was glad I was speaking to this motion because, to be fair, I see it as a no-harm kind of motion. We can always add to positivity and we can always encourage people, but just like some people won't look at no-dog signs, other people won't pay attention to campaigns to promote kindness. It's just the way of the world, unfortunately. So promoting kindness will always be lost on those who don't have kindness in their hearts. And at the end of the day, I really can't see any harm in this motion. It's just reiterating. I also don't feel the need to continually keep picking scabs off the same old wound. But somebody still managed to do that. As somebody who probably, I would suggest, contributes more on social media than others that may not have a problem, it is an issue. I find the killing them with kindness and empathy always works quite well with social media. However, there is a very negative side, and some people, not myself, tend to take things very personally on social media. So I certainly, you know, think that this is a wonderful motion. It cannot hurt. And always having that, you know, reminder, I think, is definitely beneficial. So I'm happy to support this motion.
Thank you, councillor Goin. Anyone else wishing to make an contribution? Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hadn't intended on speaking to this motion either because I also thought it was a fairly straightforward reinforcement of the position that our council has taken, which was appropriately supported by the Local Government Association, who are investing time and resources into, you know, promoting a campaign along the lines of the sorts of things that we actually initiated and through councillor Kennedy's initial motion. So I don't think that there's ever anything wrong with reminding people about the source of the campaign. That's what this does, but also, in a way, effectively thanking the Local Government Association for taking the note that they have and going to the trouble that they have of putting together the Lifting the Tone campaign. Is it a swipe at everybody in the community? No, it isn't. I think we've got to be careful to not actually make the campaign out to be something that it isn't either. I don't think we're saying everyone's toxic in the community. I don't think we're saying that everybody needs to adjust the way they behave. As is often the case with things, you're trying to deal with a minority of people who might behave inappropriately towards others. It doesn't make it acceptable, though. And this is this part of the whole, you know, it's the behaviour that you walk past analogy. So I don't think there's anything wrong with this motion. I think it's actually highly appropriate, given the genesis of the motion from councillor Kennedy, and I'm quite pleased to support the motion.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Councillor Hume?
Look, I think it's great that councillor James hasn't been experiencing any of this sort of behaviour towards him. But that doesn't mean that there aren't colleagues of his who are. It doesn't also mean that there aren't staff who aren't. And let's recognise that part of the initiation of this campaign was also about managing some of the behaviour towards staff. And I was very pleased, this morning, I picked up the phone, didn't have a direct line, but I wanted to speak to a member of the executive team for some advice about something. And when I rang the reception, there was a recorded message about, you know, the person that you speak to may be someone who, you know, lives and works in your community, or lives in your community, that you visit the beach with, that you might run into in the street. You know, please think about that and be kind and respectful. So, you know, it was great to hear that. But I think what, the reason why I understand, and councillor Chong can correct me if I'm wrong about this, this motion's been brought forward, is that we had a sort of an open action item arising from councillor Kennedy's motion, which said, you know, that we would run a campaign, we would organise a campaign. And so it's just recognising the fact that this has rolled into a broader statewide campaign and sort of closing the loop on that, on that outstanding action item, so to speak. Yeah, I think it's a fairly sensible motion, uncontroversial motion, and I'm happy to support it.
Thank you, councillor Hume. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Thank you councillor Hume. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution?
Before I call on councillor Chong, I'll enter the debate um as a councillor. And just to thank you councillor Chong for for bringing this motion this evening. We talked about it before you did that and as you correctly pointed out in your opening remarks, a number of other councils have taken this step and um uh with councillor Kennedy's motion last year, um we took it upon ourselves to work closely with with Elgat and to Miss Wickson, her team, thank you very much for the work that you did uh in lifting the tone, but also uh with with this, with our campaign, but also assisting Elgat with their campaign. Colleagues, um a couple of times a year, all the mayors get together and uh I've got to say that some of the stories I've heard around the state have been quite hair raising and um I'm I'm pleased to hear that councillor James hasn't been on the receiving end, but um um the the rise of social media and with it keyboard warriors uh is quite alarming. And we know um we have responsibility to each other and to everyone in our community that they, everyone deserves to have a psychologically safe workplace. And from a personal perspective, some of the emails that I receive, the unsolicited um hand-delivered threatening letters I get delivered in my mailbox, uh sometimes when I'm away and uh my wife is home with 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 our daughters, it's very concerning. Some people feel entitled or empowered to make comments online that they'd never walk up to you in the street and say, because they just don't have the guts. But uh uh these sorts of cowardly actions do impact people psychologically um and impact families as well. And it's incumbent upon all of us to, as I say, bring our best selves to every situation. The majority of our staff live in Clarence. And there've been some divisive uh decisions that we've made, divisive divisive issues. But that's the nature of politics. But I'm very pleased to say that at the end of a council meeting, we might disagree in here, but we can walk out there and we can um share it, you know, enjoy each other's company on another level. Um and I would hope that we can also do that in our community as well. People are entitled to have different views. But they're not entitled to abuse people, not entitled to attack people. Either us as elected members or our hardworking staff. So this campaign is something that a great deal of work has gone into. Uh I wholeheartedly support it. It is something that I think it's important for Clarence City Council to also lend our support to what Elgat's doing and send a very clear message to our community, uh to our staff and to each other that we value everyone as a person, we'll respect everyone as individuals and we'll respect their rights to have different views. But we will express our position in a respectful, um kind way. Uh and if we take the lead in this sort of actions, hopefully then the community will follow us. Councillor Chong, right of apply please.
And councillor James, I'm very happy for you that you are not one of the responding elected members, that eighty percent of them who'd experienced abuse or intimidation, that you're not one of our customer service staff who get abused on the phone regularly unnecessarily, that you're not somebody that gets abuse from the community and I'm very good, I, you know. But most of us are not you. We, many of us get abusive emails, we get abusive phone calls. That I, and it doesn't matter whether they're right or they're wrong, it's inappropriate. And what we're doing with councillor Kennedy's motion initially and that kindness campaign and this campaign from Legat is standing up and saying, it's not right. Nobody should have the kind of workplace where you come to and you're abused for holding a different view from somebody else. That is just not fair on anybody. It's not fair on us as elected members, it's not fair on the staff. And we need to recognise that and we need to stand up for it. A second thing, as councillor Hume mentioned, in our initial motion last year, we said that we would work with the sector on campaigns to ensure consistency and collaboration. That's exactly what this is doing. It's recognising that Legat has put a lot of work, helped by and many of our staff into their campaign, the Lift the Tone campaign. And it behooves us to support that and show support for the whole sector because this isn't just a Clarence issue, this is a Tasmanian issue. And unless we all stand up for it, it's only going to get worse. I seek my colleagues' support for this motion.
Thank you councillor Chong. I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Those against? So carried. Thank you. Moving now on to item ten, which is councillor question time. There are no questions on notice. Moving to ten point three, answers to questions without notice previous council meeting as listed in the agenda. Ten point four, uh questions without notice. Are there any questions for the full of the serving, starting with the deputy mayor? Councillor Mulder?
On a related topic, um recent parking enforcement at the Hobart Community Centre resolved in fines of over one thousand dollars for parking on a grassed area compared to a similar fine which could have been delivered of about one hundred dollars for parking on a footpath. Do you consider this a draconian penalty? And what steps can be taken to make the punishment more commensurate with the crime?
Thank you, CEO.
Uh thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the question councillor Mulder. Uh as you're aware, the um the fine is prescribed by the Public Places by law. I uh I understand that people will see that as significant. Uh but in the context of uh the behaviour that we're seeking to manage at the Harrow Community Centre, uh it is appropriate. We are seeking and have been for some time to manage uh parking behaviour which uh we have spoken to people about, issued warnings uh about and are now moving to issuing fines uh where uh that behaviour has not changed uh and puts users of the centre and uh schoolchildren being collected from uh the Harrow Primary School at significant risk.
Councillor Mulder?
But I'm aware that it's a standard um penalty and that it's actually um
Your second question councillor Mulder, thank you.
So um in the context of the fact that this fine is under the um bylaw, as you pointed out, that bylaws are a product of parliament. Have the um have the um recipients of those fines been advised that a magistrate could vary that statutory penalty?
CEO?
Thank you, uh Mayor. Uh councillor Mulder, yes, uh all of the recipients have been advised of their appeal rights to the magistrates court.
Councillor Hume?
Continue on the topic of parking, but in a different place. Um I had a a resident reach out to me um with a concern about uh um fine that he received, um parking in a five, well, he overstayed in a five minute parking space um where he was just going to get a coffee. Um and his concern was that um five minutes really isn't sufficient time to do anything effective. Um I suppose you can use a five minute zone to do pickups and drop offs. What what else would would have, could a five minute zone be effectively used for?
I think I know which area you're referring to as well, Bayfield Street. Uh Mr. Graham?
Oh, well, five minutes really is is just going in and collecting something. But it's up up to the persons who are doing it to judge how long it's going to take in terms of what job they are going to do and therefore whether if it's going to be at risk of being greater than five minutes, that there are thirty minute other slots around there that that persons can park at.
Well, there's those three, five minutes, then in front of that, then there's a driveway, then the rest are half hour plus what's. Second question, all councillor Hume?
Uh thank you. Councillor James?
Firstly, um when can we expect a new revised DA for the Boulevard Development at Kangaroo Bay?
Thank you councillor James. CEO?
Uh thank you, uh councillor James. The question through you, Mayor. Um I'm anticipating um having a meeting with uh Hunter Developments in the next week and once I have had that discussion, I will be bringing an update to councillors.
Councillor James, your second question?
Second question is directed to the mayor and to the Clarence councillors dated the seventh of the seventh twenty-five from David Mail, producer and curator on behalf of the Wald.
Councillor James, that's a legal matter. It's not not appropriate in this form. Take your seat. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Take your seat councillor James. You know the rules.
Well, I don't.
Take your seat councillor James.
Well.
Councillor councillor Walker?
Uh yes, and I won't give uh many numerous things of what you can do in five minutes in Bayfield Street. My question is in relation, it's a, I would be very surprised, Mayor, if you're you or indeed the general manager, the CEO or indeed uh Mrs. Marlowe is able to answer this question without taking it on notice. But obviously we have a big workforce, a diverse work workforce presumably from cadets all the way through to CEO. Um what is the median salary for a Clarence employee?
Thank you councillor Walker. Uh Ms. Marlowe? Anything else councillor Walker? Councillor Goin?
I'm trying really hard not to answer the five minute thing. Uh I just had a question in relation to the Lordedale Canal. In a uh an elected member response I got in February this year, it said that the uh Clarence was subject responsibility of the state government who owns a canal water area and the surrounding land that manages the waters adjacent to the Dew and Estuary. However, on the twenty-fifth of June, I received a response from Mr. Digan's office stating that the Lordedale Canal is under the management and responsibility of the Clarence City Council and as such removing the sediment is considered a council matter and that the state government does not have the responsibility for the maintenance or management of the canal. My question is, do we know whose responsibility it actually is? Um the further advice is that if council, it it was advised that if councillors seeking funds for the state government to assist with covering the cost of removing the sediment, that it may be prudent to make a funding submission. So if we determine that it is our responsibility, are we planning on making a funding submission? Because at the current time, due to the state election, it is recommended from the state government that we make a submission.
Before I call on the CEO, the issue clearly is that there's Ralph's Bay on the other side, which is quite sensitive. So remove the sediment here, you'll probably have to do something here as well and then the impact that that might have. Uh but when that doesn't answer the ownership issue, the responsibility issue.
Thank you, Mayor. Um uh as councillors will be aware, the the Lordedale Canal is land owned by the Crown and we have a lease over that. Now, that lease has expired. Uh we've been in the process of negotiating that for some time and we have uh issues related to uh liability for council that are unresolved and hence the delay in that. One of those issues relates to sediment. Um and in the context of how that might be managed into the future, that is an issue that we're negotiating at the moment. Uh we are expecting to further those discussions with the state government representatives through uh NRE in the next few weeks. Um we won't, I suppose the point in all of that is there's no point making a funding request until we've got the lease issues resolved. And potentially we either deal with that as part of the lease or then if that's not the case, then we consider um what other avenues we have after that. Uh but yes, we would uh as a point of principle be looking towards um resolving those issues. As the mayor has said, uh the sediments in the canal itself are only one part of the issue. There is not a lot of point in dredging that entrance if it's blocked on the Ralph's Bay side and there are a lot of environmental issues to deal with on the Ralph's Bay side. That is the more complicated area.
Councillor Goin, your second question?
Um whilst on the topic of Lordedale, I just want to speak on behalf of the community and say thank you for the stairs that I believe commenced today. I got many, many messages of triumphant images of the stairs commencing. So that was definitely a positive for the day. Um following on from Lordedale, as I was doing my investigations on the Racecourse Flats area, I entered and exited lots of entrances along those areas to have a look at the signs that have been placed. Um I have significant concerns that some of the entrances are forty-one centimetres wide, which meant even I had to go sideways to go through them. Uh do they meet the current accessibility requirements and particularly the maze constructed ones? I know they are generally not recommended for users of the Tangerer Trail, given their hazardous nature for horses, if a horse could fit through forty-one centimetres, which it clearly could not.
Thank you councillor Goin. Uh oh, CEO. Yeah, babe. Yeah, but but what I will do is that Mr. Graham takes some credit though for the stairs.
Yes, please.
Nice to get a good news story.
Yes.
Councillor Dugga, councillor Warren, councillor Chong, councillor Kennedy. All right, well colleagues, um that uh that draws us to a close. So I'll call for a motion to move into closed meeting. Please move councillor Warren, second and councillor Chong. I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Those against? Well, thank you to those members of the public who joined us in person, the serving of those that joined us from home. Um please end the live stream. See you all again three weeks' time.